Good morning. The time now is 10:10 on Friday, December 8, 2023. I would like to convene the City Council's special meeting. It's actually a continuation from Wednesday. So, meeting call to order. Please do the work.
Mayor Winn.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Winn.
Councilwoman Min Fan West.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Monzo.
I'm here.
And Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with Vice Mayor Winn absent.
All right, thank you very much. We would like to go with the oral communication. We would like to start with the oral communication. So why don't you read the instruction into the record? I just want to remind everyone that oral communication today is only for agenda item only. So if you intend to talk with anything outside of the agenda item, please wait until December 13th for the regular meeting. So please call the first order speaker.
So this is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding items on the agenda. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the City Council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record. We'll go ahead and start with Tim Hogan.
Will you please? According to the agenda, I didn't have the Plaids of Allegiance, but I was just reminded that we need to do the Plaids of Allegiance. So can you do it? Would you please stand for the Plaids of Allegiance? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I apologize for that. I thought that there's a continuation from the Wednesday, and we did it on Wednesday already. And it wasn't in the agenda item. I mean, on the agenda, so anyway.
Our first speaker is Tim Hogan.
Abraham Lincoln said of himself, "I am a slow walker, but I never walk back." This is the essence of leadership. It speaks to the ideal that the pace at which we move is not as important as the direction we are headed. We all know the history of our financial troubles. We've heard all the arguments. We are all painfully aware of how perilous our situation is. Now is not the time to debate the merits of the case, to fret over past errors, or to question the wisdom of recent events. It is time to act in the best interest of our city and all its citizens. We citizens don't seek any display of false courage from any council member, nor any grandstand against perceived injustices, or a bold stance for some indefinite principle. We do not wish for, nor do we desire misguided adherence to some inflexible ideology which requires blind opposition to taxation. We ask only for you to do your duty. Grant us, grant to we the people, the opportunity to decide for ourselves whether or not we will accept an additional tax. It is not you who will raise the tax. It is not you who will bear the burden for this decision. It is we, the people, who will make this choice. We ask only for you to treat us with the dignity we deserve as meaningful, equal participants in our democracy. It is inevitable this tax will be raised. It is only a matter of time before some opportunistic county agency sweeps in to claim it. So the tax will one day be raised. The question is, will this city directly benefit, or will the money go elsewhere? So I encourage you to keep walking. Keep walking forward. Our future is in front of us.
Our next speaker is Davora Mariskel.
Good afternoon. I'm taking a little bit of time off for work to be able to come and do this today. So thank you for your time, and thank you for addressing me as I request. Mine's short and simple. You were elected to represent the residents of Westminster. So regardless of what your personal opinions are on raising taxes, that's not up to you. That's up to the voters of the community. So I'm going to say the same thing that I said with Measure M and Measure S. Let us vote.
Our next speaker is Teri Rains.
Hey, it's going before I started talking. Hold up. Lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on our part. Déjà vu, August 2022. Another important meeting to consider placing a tax measure on the ballot held early on a workday with just 24 hours notice and no Zoom access. We get it. You don't want us to know about it. You don't want to hear our input. You don't want us to hear your discussion about it. You just want our money. Amy Namquann not bothering to even show up to Wednesday's special meeting to consider this item proves you are both chicken shit. Hen. As WPOA representative stated Wednesday, your failure to prioritize this issue and attend that meeting was your first step in defunding our police department and public safety. You wasted everyone's time and resources with your stupid games. No vote could even take place Wednesday because of your antics. Amy, you attended photo op events on Wednesday but refused to show up and do what you were elected to do, conduct the people's business. Namquann called in sick the day before, but he livestreamed a show that same evening and looked just fine. Diagnosis: chicken shititis. Neither one of you give a damn about this city or its residents. Again, sorry, Mayor Winn, but their absence is lack of commitment to our city and over-the-top antics warrant profanity. News flash: today's vote has nothing to do with you raising taxes. You don't have the authority to do so. Only the voters do. Today's vote is about democracy, about giving us our constitutional right to vote on this measure and decide the future of our city. A no vote or abstention today is a vote to suppress our constitutional right to vote and a step toward defunding our police department and public safety. Each of you, like the rest of us, can vote however you want to at the polls. Christian, please confirm that the 4-0 vote in June with Councilwoman Ho absent qualifies as a unanimous vote of the governing body, and that the timing of that vote in relation to placing this measure on the primary ballot complies with state law. You stated the operative date of this measure should it pass in the primary would not be until October 1st. For Measure Y, the City Council adopted the ordinance on November 30th, even though the election results were not certified until December 2nd. If early election results for this measure reflect a clear and substantial victory, couldn't the same thing occur to force a July 1st operative date versus October 1st? Adoption would have to happen, though, later than March 13th, just over a week after the election, in order to meet the 110-day requirement. So would that be too early before certification? I won't repeat my comments about the survey, but the results do show a lot less support for this measure versus last year's. With a margin of sampling error factored in, the support is barely 50%. If you decide to attach a sunset date like with Measure Y, remember another agency can pass a tax measure that will be imposed on Westminster residents immediately after our measure's sunset, and the city will never be able to recapture that revenue locally, ever. So no matter what measure version you decide on today, you all must vote yes to put it on the ballot for us to vote on it. This is democracy. If you suppress our right to vote, there will be hell to pay. You can bank on it.
Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Toni Bowie.
Mr. Mayor, may I address her question? Her statement? So, Mr. Toni, can you hold on just a second? So basically, when Teri Rains addressed, one of the residents addressed regarding that I'm doing a photo op on Wednesday, I'm sitting being here. I want to inform you guys and my constituents that I have a reservation for months now regarding this whole week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, to help our veterans and to prevent suicidal. That's what my commitment to them for months, and that's why I couldn't make it on Wednesday. So that's why I'm here today, even though there is the continued event for today to promote suicidal prevention for our veterans. And that's why I wasn't here on Wednesday.
To convene the City Council's special meeting is actually a continuation from Wednesday. So, meeting call to order, please do the work.
Mayor Nguyen.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen. Councilwoman Fan West.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Monzo.
I'm here.
And Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with Vice Mayor Nguyen absent.
All right, thank you very much. We would like to go with the oral commi-- we would like to start with the oral communication, so why don't you read the instruction into the record? I just want to remind everyone that oral communication today is only for agenda item only, so if you intend to talk with anything outside of the agenda item, please wait until December 13th for the regular meeting. So, please call the first order speaker.
So, this is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding items on the agenda. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the City Council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the City Council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to the city clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record. We'll go ahead and start with Tim Hogan.
Will you please? According to the agenda, I didn't have the pledge of allegiance, but I was just reminded that we need to do the pledge of allegiance, so can you do it? Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I apologize for that. I thought that there's a continuation from the Wednesday, and we did it on Wednesday already, so, and it wasn't in the agenda item, I mean, in the, on the agenda, so, anyway.
Our first speaker is Tim Hogan.
Abraham Lincoln said of himself, "I am a slow walker, but I never walk back." This is the essence of leadership. It speaks to the ideal that the pace at which we move is not as important as the direction we are headed. We all know the history of our financial troubles. We've heard all the arguments. We are all painfully aware of how perilous our situation is. Now is not the time to debate the merits of the case, to fret over past errors, or to, or to question the wisdom of recent events. It is time to act in the best interest of our city and all its citizens. We citizens don't seek any display of false courage from any council member, nor any grand stand against perceived injustices, or a bold stance for some indefinite principle. We do not wish for, nor do we desire misguided adherence to some inflexible ideology which requires blind opposition to taxation. We ask only for you to do your duty. Grant us, grant to we the people, the opportunity to decide for ourselves whether or not we will accept an additional tax. It is not you who will raise the tax. It is not you who will bear the burden for this decision. It is we, the people, who will make this choice. We ask only for you to treat us with the dignity we deserve as meaningful, equal participants in our democracy. It is inevitable this tax will be raised. It is only a matter of time before some opportunistic county agency sweeps, swoops in to claim it. So the tax will one day be raised. The question is, will this city directly benefit, or will the money go elsewhere? So I encourage you to keep walking, keep walking forward. Our future is in front of us.
Our next speaker is Davora Mariscal.
Good afternoon, I'm taking a little bit of time off of work to be able to come and do this today, so thank you for your time, and thank you for addressing me as, as I request. Mine's short and simple. You were elected to represent the residents of Westminster, so regardless of what your personal opinions are on raising taxes, that's not up to you, that's up to the voters of the community. So I'm going to say the same thing that I said with Measure M and Measure SS. Let us vote.
Our next speaker is Teri Rains.
Hey, it's going before I started talking, hold up. Lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on our part. Déjà vu, August 2022. Another important meeting to consider placing a tax measure on the ballot, held early on a workday with just 24 hours' notice and no Zoom access. We get it, you don't want us to know about it, you don't want to hear our input, you don't want us to hear your discussion about it, you just want our money. Amy Namquann not bothering to even show up to Wednesday's special meeting to consider this item proves you are both chicken shit, hin. As WPOA representative stated Wednesday, your failure to prioritize this issue and attend that meeting was your first step in defunding our police department and public safety. You wasted everyone's time and resources with your stupid games. No vote could even take place Wednesday because of your antics. Amy, you attended photo op events on Wednesday but refused to show up and do what you were elected to do, conduct the people's business. Namquann called in sick the day before, but he livestreamed a show that same evening and looked just fine. Diagnosis: chicken shititis. Neither one of you give a damn about this city or its residents. Again, sorry, Mayor Nguyen, but their absence's lack of commitment to our city and over-the-top antics warrant profanity. Newsflash, today's vote has nothing to do with you raising taxes. You don't have the authority to do so, only the voters do. Today's vote is about democracy, about giving us our constitutional right to vote on this measure and decide the future of our city. A no vote or abstention today is a vote to suppress our constitutional right to vote and a step toward defunding our police department and public safety. Each of you, like the rest of us, can vote however you want to at the polls. Christian, please confirm that the 4-0 vote in June with Councilwoman Ho absent qualifies as a unanimous vote of the governing body, and that the timing of that vote in relation to placing this measure on the primary ballot complies with state law. You stated the operative date of this measure, should it pass in the primary, would not be until October 1st. For Measure Y, the City Council adopted the ordinance on November 30th, even though the election results were not certified until December 2nd. If early election results for this measure reflect a clear and substantial victory, couldn't the same thing occur to force a July 1st operative date versus October 1st? Adoption would have to happen, though, no later than March 13th, just over a week after the election, in order to meet the 110-day requirement, so would that be too early before certification? I won't repeat my comments about the survey, but the results do show a lot less support for this measure versus last year's, with a margin of sampling error factored in the support is barely 50%. If you decide to attach a sunset date like with Measure Y, remember, another agency can pass a tax measure that will be imposed on Westminster residents immediately after our measure's sunset, and the city will never be able to recapture that revenue locally, ever. So no matter what measure version you decide on today, you all must vote yes to put it on the ballot for us to vote on it. This is democracy. If you suppress our right to vote, there will be hell to pay. You can bank on it.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Tony Bowie.
Mr. Mayor, may I address her question?
Yes.
Her statement? So, Mr. Tony, can you hold on just a second? So, basically, when Teri Rains addressed, one of the resident addressed regarding that I'm doing a photo op on Wednesday, I'm sitting being here, I want to inform you guys and my constituents that I have a reservation for months now regarding this whole week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, to help our veteran and to prevent suicidal. That's what my commitment to them for months, and that's why I couldn't make it on Wednesday. So that's why I'm here today, even though there is the continued event for today to promote suicidal prevention for our veteran, and that's why I wasn't here on Wednesday. Now regarding the sign on her chest.
Can you, we just briefly, I think it's enough for explanation, so.
Okay, I can address the second one later, thank you.
Please proceed.
Good morning. I am Tony Bowie, a resident of Westminster for more than 22 years, and I am now a planning commissioner for City of Westminster. I'm glad to work together with all of you here, and I come here to support the, the resolution that you plan to submit for the people to vote on whether or not they agree to increase the 0.5% tax increase, sales tax. And I hope that you will submit it on time, so that it will be on the ballot for all the people to vote on it. You don't have to work effectively, don't wait till the last minute to submit it, and if you fail, that is a bad mistake. So today, I come here to support the resolution, and then I wish that the, you, all of you are elected by the people, so all of you have to work harder for, effectively, for the people, and I have this four letter to gift to you. Tita. T mean transparency, E mean effectively, T, another T, is, here, trustworthy, and the last one is accountability. Tita, it's written with trita, because he working very hard. He's, he is tita. Transparency, effectively, that mean all of you have to work effectively for the people, and trustworthy, you should gain the trust of the people, and the last one is accountability. You should have, be responsibility to work harder and to work with the people, for the people, and because you are elected by the people. And the last thing I want to raise my opinion to another people who just come before me. She, where the things that defund two of you here, she has no right to do it. Nobody has the right to refund, only the people who will do it. And we have to support the police department, fire department, and put a lot of effort to work together with all of other department, especially the building department, has to make things working hard for a lot of people who want to do business in our city. Thank you for listening to my concern.
Thank you very much. Before, thank you very much, before you call the next speaker, I just want to remind everyone, including the council members, that it's my duty to conduct the meeting productively, effectively. So I want to take this moment to thank Councilwoman Amy Fan West, that, you know, just briefly, you did briefly on your comments, and I just want to remind everyone, if you want to, you are, you have the right to respond, but just briefly, or else I have to intervene, so I ask you, I'll do that. So, also, for the speakers, I understand that you are talking about the item, but please, just the item only, don't bring in any other issues. If you want to talk about that, wait until the next time, which is the next regular meeting. Once again, thank you very much for taking my order. Next.
Our next speaker is Vincent with WMEA.
Good morning, Council, Police, and City staff. My name is Vincent Wanta, I'm with WMEA. I'm the vice president, and I'm speaking on behalf of the WMEA. Some of our guys couldn't be here because they're currently out in the field, so I'm representing them today. Today, I want to state the importance of public safety, safer roads, safer neighborhoods, and safer water. We are bare, we are barely able to do the bare minimum with, with who and what we got. It is a constant uphill battle. Passing the 1% sales tax was a start to helping fund our daily operations, but we are still not out of the woods yet. Why is it that we continue to hear some of the council members saying, "We don't want to raise taxes"? If you're not raising anything, the people are. It's their voice and their choice. Now, I want to address the public, to let them know Public Works has always stand hand in hand with them. We hear your voices when potholes and streets are bad. We hear your voices when trees are down. We hear your voices when water is leaking. We hear you. To the public, whether you choose this increase or not, just know, we will always stand hand in hand with you and support our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kyle Cisok with WPOA.
Good morning, Mayor, council members, city manager, city staff, and our community. Thank you, guys, for all being here today, and especially thank you, guys, for being here today, performing your civic duty. The Westminster Police Officers Association appreciates all of your support. The WPOA, city, and all the residents are affected, and this is the truth. A no vote today is the first step into funding the police, fire, and all of public safety. We appreciate you all showing leadership and passing this agenda item today, allowing our citizens to vote and working towards financial, financially stabilizing our city once and for all. Thank you, guys.
And we have a final speaker, Roland Perez with WPOA.
Mayor, council members, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here on behalf of the Westminster Police Officers Association, but most importantly, I'm here representing all the citizens of the City of Westminster. We are here to make sure that our elected council members do not defund the police, services, fire services, and city services. With an abstain or no vote, one will be making sure that the city files for bankruptcy and defunds first responders. I would like to tell you a story of a family who decided to homeschool their kids. At an early age, while the husband was to be the main breadwinner, for the last 10 years, his wife has diligently stayed at home to teach their children and be involved in their daily studies and sports. She has been able to do this faithfully because of the support of her husband, who works hard to provide for his family. This person and so many others just like him work hard for the City Council. It is not fun knowing that as you're, as a family, you may or may not have a job, you may or may not know where your next income will be, you may or may not have a place to live, because the money is simply no longer there. With the looming threat of financial ruin for the city, there is an opportunity to prevent financial ruin for so many families tied to this city. Do what is right for these families, do what is right for the citizens of Westminster, do what is right for the city. Vote what you know is right, and not for your own personal gain. Let's change the direction of the City of Westminster today. This is the right time to ease the pain and suffering for these employees of the city. They cannot go through this again as they did in 2008. You are not raising taxes, you are allowing people to decide. Let them decide, and let's work together in the future. Thank you.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
Thank you very much. Once again, I want to thank you all for taking your time in the middle of, I mean, in the middle of the day to come out and, and talk about it. We value your opinions, and we will discuss and, about the items. And the item that we want to discuss today is to continue the, from the December 6, 2023 special meeting, a strategic plan goal number one, achieve financial stability, and the proposal is to consideration of resolution and ordinance placing a measure on the, on the March 5, 2024 ballot, asking voters if they want to add a half cent, a half cent city transaction and use sales tax. So with that, I would like to open up for the council, before, before council session, we don't have the consultant here today, right? I don't see the consultant here today. Just to remind everyone that we had a consultant going over with the result, or with the survey that they did for us. If you haven't got the chance, I don't know how we are, how are we going to do this, but I, I know staff will try to answer any question that you might have. So with that, I will start out with the staff, either city manager or director of finance.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. So we are prepared to briefly do the presentation that we did on Wednesday, if that's the desire of the council, but we also have the slides for the community survey as well, if we wanted to go through those again, but, you know, at this point, I leave it up to the council as to what direction you'd like to go with this discussion, but we're available to, to take components of the previous presentation, or we can do a part of it, all of it.
I would like to thank the council members. I know that Councilmember Menzo and Councilmember Ho was here, were here on Wednesday, but I valued the presence of Councilmember West today, so I think it's for her benefit, I think we should be fairly presented to her, so that she can have a full understanding of, of what we are trying to do, so she can make the right decision for the resident of Westminster. I don't know if that's okay with Councilmember Menzo and Councilmember Ho. Councilmember Menzo?
Yes, for sure. If we need to go over, have staff go over the presentation and information, I think that would, it's important, so if, to benefit, so Councilmember West has a clear picture of what's before us.
So, okay, not, not a problem.
I agree with that.
Okay, great. So just to, that's a great idea. Okay, great. So to briefly recap, you know, as we had said, back in June, as part of the strategic plan, we presented a report regarding, you know, a potential half-cent transaction and use tax as part of the goal to achieve financial stability, and since then, we've been working with the Lou Edwards Group and FM3 to develop a community, to develop and conduct a community priority survey, which is consistent with past practices, you know, when we were considering a potential TUT. So we'll have our, you know, finance director go through PowerPoint presentation of just basically where the finances are, some of the history of our finances. Unfortunately, FM3 could not be here today to, again, do the results and provide the results of the community survey, so we'll do the best that we can to recap what that survey looks like. So there were some concerns at the last meeting about the timing, and I just wanted to reiterate from that meeting, that back in June, there was direction from the City Council to move forward with doing a community survey. However, as we know, there were a few things that had happened for, during a period of time in which it was determined by the experts that any kind of survey would not yield accurate results, given the political climate of, of the city. And so ultimately, a survey was conducted in early to mid-November, and it takes time to generate survey results and, and put them in a digestible format, so that's where we are right now, and the survey results were provided to the, you know, to the city earlier this week. So with that, I will turn it over to Erin Bax, our finance director, who will briefly go through the PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Christine. Good morning, Council, Mayor, members of the public, staff. First of all, I'd like to say that these slides that I presented Wednesday were a summary of the slides that were presented in June, so they were brought to the council in two presentations, one with the budget and one with the strategic plan goal of achieving financial stability. So they're a recap, so I'll start with that. Per the strategic plan, goal number one is to achieve financial stability, and one of the object, objectives approved by the City Council previously was consideration of placing a measure on the March 5, 24 ballot, asking voters if they want to add a half-cent city transaction and use tax. Information was presented at June 14 meeting, which is where these slides originated, and the discussion resulted in direction to staff to conduct a community survey, consistent with previous surveys done, to identify priorities and feasibility of an additional half-cent TUT, as well as other revenue options. Consultant FM3 presented their results on Wednesday, and we can discuss those later if council has questions. As discussed in June, a half-cent TUT is projected to produce an additional 8 million in revenue. There was also discussion regarding a sunset clause and a designation of a special purpose tax, which requires a two-thirds votes. This is a brief history, and I think we've all seen this, but Westminster relied heavily on redevelopment funds for years, for special projects, to fund basic city, or services in the general fund, and to basically pay for things that the city needed, projects, streets. And anyway, when the, when redevelopment was eliminated, Westminster was left with a large deficit and the inability to generate substantial revenue to fund basic services. This resulted in massive layoffs and a reduction and elimination of services. Bankruptcy at that time was projected for 2018, 19, but with the passing of Measure SS, a one-cent transaction use tax in 2016, basic services were continued. Staffing levels remained minimal, and many programs that were eliminated still have not been reinstated. Measure SS generated 16 million in revenue, but that was never enough to fund increased service levels or continue at current service levels due to inflation. Measure SS expired December 31 of '22. In November of '22, voters approved Measure Y, which is a 20-year continuation of the one-cent TUT. Revenue collections began in April of this year, but at that time, it was understood that Measure Y was not enough to fund the projected annual deficit, and the current year budget was adopted with a $6 million deficit. Measure Y has extended the use of reserves by, and bought additional time for those reserves to be depleted. Without significant changes to the rate of revenue collection, the fund balance will drop below policy threshold of 17%, which is approved by the council with our fund balance policy in fiscal year 2020, 26, 27, and will be completely depleted by fiscal year 27, 28. It is interesting to note that the original projections back in 2016, before Measure SS, the city, or with Measure SS, excuse me, the city would be out of money in fiscal year 23, 24 if Measure SS was not continued, and if the 1% transaction use tax was continued without a sunset, the city, city would be out of money in '24, '25. We're currently projecting '27, '28, so we've been able to buy a few additional years with increased revenue, new programs, and things like that, but projections are still the same. We've bought three years, but we're still projected to be out of money in fiscal year So this slide is a visual of that. As you can see, the general fund, fund balance, which is represented with the teal line, falls below the targeted reserve of 17%, which is represented by the gray shaded area. That happens in fiscal year 26, 27, and as you can also see in the slide, '27, '28, we hit zero. We are out of funds. This also is another way to look at it. This shows revenue and expenditures projected out for the next five years, starting with the current adopted budget. In the current year, we're projecting a use of reserves of 6.3 million and an ending reserve balance of 28.9 million. Again, we're below the 17% projected emergency reserve in '26, '27, and we're completely out of funding in '27, '28. One of the primary discussion points in June was the revenue and taxation code, which allows a city, city and county, county, and/or other government entity to impose a transaction and use tax not to exceed a combined 2%. This means that any other agency can impose a tax for a purpose that is not directly related to the general welfare and our overall needs of Westminster. So in this slide, this shows the breakdown of what residents or So in this slide, this shows the breakdown of what residents or anybody pays in the city of Westminster, people that visit. So prior to Measure SS and then Measure Y, the city received 1%. At that time, it was a 7.75% collection. After Measure SS and then Y, we now receive 2%. That's in comparison to the state, which receives almost 4% of our sales tax collected, and county programs receive 2.3%, and OCTA receives a half a percent. So transaction use tax can be imposed by other agencies. The first agency to obtain approval of any remaining TUT below the 2% limit secures the revenue. So if two agencies get approval at the same election, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration will not administer the TUT. Neither agency will collect the revenue. If a multi-jurisdiction agency imposes a tax that is greater than what is available in the city, it is immediately imposed when the existing city tax expires. So currently, we have a 1% with a 20-year sunset. If another agency imposes something more than what is available, currently, there's a half percent available, if another agency imposes a 1%, as soon as our Measure Y expires, they get that revenue. We have no ability to capture it at that time. There have been a few agencies in California that have been successful with legislation to exceed that 2% cap. So this slide shows the tax rates in surrounding cities, but currently, there are 446 TUTs being collected throughout the state of California for a variety of purposes. If the council is interested in placing a measure on the ballot for March of '24, the estimated cost is between 136,000 and 162,000. The deadline to submit documents to the Register of Voters office is today, Friday, December 8th, by the end of business. If a transaction use tax is approved by the voters, the first day of collection would commence on the first calendar quarter, more than 110 days after voter approval. This could be as late as October 1st of '24, if passed in March, pending certification of results.
Can I jump in there real quickly? Because that was raised by one of the speakers. Technically, there's a possibility that it could be, if we were able to certify the election between the date of the election, which is March 5th and March 13th. That's the problem. We don't know when the election could be certified. But technically, if you were to meet all the requirements and certify the election by the 13th of March, then yes, it would go into effect July 1st. That seems like a real unlikely possibility, which is why I said October 1st is the likely date. But it's not just the voter approval, it's actually the passage of the ordinance in addition to that. So that, the two readings of the ordinance would have to take place as well.
And even if it starts collections, the city doesn't receive it for another quarter. So it's three months after that before the city starts receiving the revenue. So finally, Westminster continues to make progress with revenue generating projects and initiatives. Like I said, we've postponed the running out of money for a few years since original projections back in 2016. But these continue to take time and effort. None of these options provide an ongoing revenue source that will close the gap, nor is there a large one-time amount that can be captured. There is a half percent available for agencies in Orange County to impose, and the first to secure approval will receive this money. If this happens, Westminster's ability to capture revenues that will directly support the community will be lost, although our residents will still pay. In anticipation of a full depletion of reserves in fiscal year 27-28, absent a large revenue generating source, further reductions will be made, and no supplemental budgets requests will be presented, starting with the '24-25 budget approval process. At this point, we can take questions and answer on this presentation, or try to answer what we can on the FM3 survey results.
Yeah, Erin, I have a few questions. So back to the previous last page that you were looking at. So you said, basically, it will cost the taxpayer between 136,253 to 161,907 if we put it through the primary. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's the cost of putting it on the ballot.
Okay, now, would it be cheaper to put it on the ballot in November? What's the cost?
I don't have the numbers in front of me. I don't believe it was much cheaper, was it?
I have those numbers in front of me, Councilwoman Fan West. So like you mentioned, for March, it would be an estimate of 136,000 to 161,000. We are consolidating with the county for our November election for our municipal. It would be an estimate with an additional measure for 118,000 to 138,000. That's our municipal election with the addition of a measure.
Although, I would like to ask the city attorney, I believe that we can save, I don't know how much we save, because we don't know the amount for the primary as well compared to the November. But if we wait until then, for every quarter that we have to lose $2 million?
I can address that. The tax is estimated to raise about $8 million. And so for every quarter that it's not in place, that would be about $2 million that you would be foregoing.
Correct.
So if you enacted in March, and we, staff would do everything we could to get it enacted by July, if that's possible, but more than likely October.
So that'd be between 4 and 6 million, so two per quarter.
Correct.
So we would lose out on 4 to 6 million by waiting till November.
Yeah.
That's compared to, you know, the cost of.
Correct.
Is there any other question for me?
Okay, so you did mention in 2016, you present the budget and the estimation to the council in 2016, that by 2024, we will be basically out of money. Is that correct?
In 2016, yes. With the budget presentation, we, prior to Measure SS, we were projecting bankruptcy in fiscal year 1819. With the passage of Measure SS, that prolonged it. Measure S has had a sunset, so that was '23-24. And if it continued, it was '24-25.
Okay, so it's because the 1% tax that's keeping us afloat to '20-27-28, right?
It's kept us afloat, but inflation, other things have happened, but we were able to extend it because there have been savings, we have had salary savings, we have had unfilled positions, we've had additional revenue, we've looked at our fees, we've raised those where we can, we've recovered our costs, we've implemented things, so we have been able to extend that about three years.
Okay, that's good. Okay. And then, do you mind going briefly, like what you just did for the survey as well? Do you mind going through that?
I'll pull up the survey. Christine, do you want to discuss? Or Adolfo, anybody? Do you want to?
Great. So I'm going to do my best to highlight what Adam from FM3 did on Wednesday, as far as the survey. So FM3 Research, they do this for cities and other organizations all over regarding, you know, surveying. They are specializing in metrics and data collection and basically providing results like these. So a survey was conducted November 8th through the 16th. This is during the time in which they telephoned what Adam had stated, thousands of, you know, thousands of residents within the city, in which 200, or Westminster residents likely to vote in March 2024 election, whatever their metric is to determine that. They completed a total of 238 interviews, and that's from start to finish, those who participated and answered all the questions from the beginning to the end without hanging up on them. And so in which, you know, they've got a, you know, 6.6% marginal sampling error as well. So some of the questions that were provided were the same as ones in 2015, 2020, 2021, and 2022. Those questions are highlighted within this presentation, and the survey was conducted in English, Vietnamese, and Spanish. One thing that FM3 did note is the demographics of the survey was conducted proportionally to the demographics of the city. So if we had 40% Vietnamese, the survey results yielded, it had 40% Vietnamese who responded. I think it was about, you know, about 35% Caucasian and so forth. So those, unfortunately, are data points that we as a city do not have. That's just what was presented on Wednesday. So next slide. So the general attitudes of the community. So this is basically asking the survey participants what their views are, if whether these things are favorable or unfavorable, in their opinion, in which the result is that Westminster's public safety agencies are viewed very favorably. So the question that was asked was, tell me whether you have a favorable, somewhat favorable, somewhat favorable, or somewhat favorable, somewhat unfavorable, or very unfavorable opinion of that organization. 81% favorable toward the Westminster Police Department, and then, of course, 77% for the West, the Orange County Fire Authorities or CFA serving Westminster, 70% for local small business owners, and then, of course, city government at 55%, 48% for the City Council, and then only about 29% for local taxpayer advocates. So that gives you a general idea of organizations that are active in public life and what the survey participants viewed, you know, as favorable and unfavorable. Next slide. There is a strong continued sense of need for additional funding for city services. The question was asked if they think there's a great need, some need, a little need, or no real need for additional funds to provide the level of services that Westminster residents need and want. So these are just the results of that same question being asked over the years for the survey. And so back in December 2015, 62%, May 2021, 63% great or some need. The last one that was done was 77%, which was much higher, you know, for the total. But November for, November 2023, which is this survey, it was 68%, relatively close. There is obviously a lower percentage of great need, but about the same of some need. So 68% feel there is a great need or some need for additional funding for services. Next slide. So the question was asked, you know, if the participant thinks each of the following statements is accurate or inaccurate, and this is just to test, you know, whether they recall the existence of Measure Y being passed. And so Westminster voters recently increased the local sales tax rate, which came in at 56%, and then 46% for Westminster voters recently extended the local sales tax rate for a longer period of time. So about half the respondents perceive or remember the recent enactment of Measure Y. Next slide. So this question asked if the participants believe the following statement is accurate or inaccurate. Seven in 10 respondents perceive that city staff are responsive to residents' needs. So that is 71%, with very accurate at 33%, somewhat accurate at 38%. And so that's a reflection on the respondent's perception of staff's responsiveness. Okay, next. Priorities for local funding. So this goes into the section in which we asked the respondents to determine what the priorities are, specific priorities are within the community, and what they perceive to be important. So extremely important, very important, somewhat, not too important, don't know if it's important. So these are, a lot of these are the same priority points that were asked in previous surveys. We did make sure to ask, to add additional questions that are very related to current issues. So we did, you know, we did ask about cleanliness in the parks. That's been something that's been raised, you know, cleanliness in public areas, safety in public areas, of course, reiterating homelessness is an issue. So at 85%, the respondents perceived protecting local drinking water supplies as the most important. You'll see on this, these are very high marks, and they're very close in percentages among each other. Next is 84% investigating preventing property crimes, addressing homelessness. 83% of the respondents said that was extremely or very important. And then, of course, preventing the elimination of several public safety units was 82%, very important. Maintain the city's ability to respond to a natural and radical disaster, it's 81%. And that's something that was asked in light of what happened with the COVID-19 pandemic. Upgrading outdated lifesaving equipment, such as cardiac monitors, defibrillators, and Jaws of Life, 79% importance. And then, of course, repairing streets and potholes. So these were basically about mid-80s down to very high 70s, and these are perceived as the most important issues and priorities. So next, we go into high 70s to, you know, low 70s. Cleaning litter and trash neighborhoods in public areas was important at 78%. Preventing the elimination specifically of police gang and drug units, 77%. Clearing homeless encampments, very specific, 77%. As you know, we've experienced that much more in the last several years. Improving training on police officers on interacting with people experiencing homelessness or mental health issues, the importance 76%. Retaining local businesses, also 76%. Preventing emergency response and equipment failure, 75%. Protecting Westminster's local finances at 74%. And then sustaining Westminster's long-term financial stability at 73%. And this continues to go down from lower 70s to very high 60s. Ensuring Westminster's qualified police officers do not leave for police forces, 73% of the respondents felt that was extremely or very important. Preventing further cuts to 911 emergency response, that was a 72%. Keeping public areas safe and clean, that would be parks, sidewalks, public right-of-way areas, 72% perceive that to be extremely important and very important. Then also preventing cuts to the number of paramedics, improving the cleanliness of neighborhoods and public areas, 71%. 70% for outdated fire trucks, basic firefighting protective equipment at 70%. 69% preventing cuts to the number of police officers. You know, over the years, we've, you know, we've had fluctuations in the number of officers for full staffing. And then 69% maintaining storm drains. Okay. And this just continues, continues some of those priorities, again, protecting city's disaster repairness program, maintaining fire protection, preventing cuts to the number of firefighters, preserving housing that's affordable for seniors and veterans, retaining local police officers, preventing cuts to the anti-gang and anti-drug units, increasing housing that's affordable for middle class, and then recruiting and retaining Vietnamese-speaking police officers. And those ranked from higher 60s to mid-60s. And so with those priorities, the participants, respondents were then asked to weigh in on their interest in potential local revenue options. And so we didn't really go into this at that time, but there was a hypothetical, hypothetical seven-five-word ballot statement or ballot title and summary for a half-cent measure, and this one, this one is, let's see, we didn't, you know, we didn't go after, we didn't go over this last time, but, Christian, do you think we should just go over these slides? We didn't last time, but up to you.
I mean, there was three questions asked.
Okay.
I mean, I think we just briefly state that. One was for the half-cent.
Yeah.
General tax.
Okay. So we'll go through, we'll go through those then. So this was provided, Westminster Safety Services Stabilization Measure, it's for a half-cent measure to sustain Westminster long-term financial stability, restore services, prevent future cuts to services, including 911 emergency response, police, neighborhood patrols, gang drug prevention, firefighters, paramedics, keep parks, public areas safe and clean, address homelessness, support housing affordability, protect local drinking water supplies, retain local businesses, shall an ordinance establishing a half-cent sales tax, providing an estimated 8.4 million annually for general government use until ended by voters, requiring audits, public spending disclosure funds. ended by voters, requiring audits, public spending disclosure funds controlled locally be adopted. So that was ultimately for a half-cent until ended by voters, no sunset.
And let me just interject that it says 8.4, but we, the finance director has subsequently reanalyzed that to be eight million.
Approximately eight, yes.
Yeah.
So this is essentially, let's see, this, so there, so we did test, so there was a test done for three potential ballot titles and summary. One was for half-cent, no sunset. This one that's being shown is for continuing the existing one, one cent that we currently have to ultimately remove the sunset. So it would be, it would be, you know, until ended by voters. So this, this is just a question that, it's a question that shows that. So we'll move on to the next one. Next slide. Okay, great. Did we?
I'll just go to the summary.
Yeah, where did we?
Isn't, I think there was a summary, wasn't there? That was the one that was a specific tax for a public safety only.
I missed that one. Where's that? Did we miss it?
I think I did.
Sorry, not our slides. How do you go back? Okay, so this one, so, so the third thing that was also tested was for a specific half-cent that was allocated specifically for a special purpose, which is for public safety. It would require a two-thirds vote. And so that's, that's essentially what the third thing, the, the third type of measure that was tested was. So, next slide. Okay, so the next question is whether the respondent found it to be very convincing, somewhat convincing, or not convincing at all as a reason to support, you know, a measure. So these are just some of the metrics that, you know, that were evaluated. So response times, homelessness, homelessness and crime. The most impactful information about the measures relate to maintaining response times, which were 911 response times, homelessness, addressing homelessness in the city, and then, of course, crime, 86%, 79%, 72%. Response time being the most at 86%. Homelessness at 68%, whoops, sorry, 79% and crime at 72. So this continues that question. Next slide. Accountability, very, very convincing, somewhat convincing at 70%. And this is, you know, the measure continues strict accountability provisions such as citizens oversight, public disclosure, and an annual financial audit. So if a measure were passed, you know, the, the accountability portion of it is very and somewhat convincing. Local control, all funds raised by this measure are legally required to be spent in the city, and passing this measure will ensure local control of funding and provide a guaranteed source of funding for essential city services that cannot be taken by the county or state government. That was very convincing or somewhat convincing at 68%. And then equally at 68%, police officers. The reason for, you know, voting on a, on a sales tax measure, police officers. Westminster is losing experience qualified police officers nearby cities because we cannot afford to retain them here. This measure will help retain qualified officers and prevent cuts to the number of officers in the city. Without this measure, cannot ensure adequate neighborhood patrols or specialized gang and drug prevention programs to keep residents and their properties safe. Okay, next slide. And cleanup was something we had mentioned and highlighted in the survey as well. 65% cleanup, litter, trash on many of the streets. And then the, it hurts the look of the city and the ability to track businesses and jobs. And the measure will provide funding needed to increase street cleanups throughout the city, making Westminster a better place to live, work, and raise a family. And then, of course, streets, 64% found that to be very convincing or somewhat convincing. Next. So after all that information, close to six in 10 respondents support all three of the options that were surveyed. So again, going back to the three options, half-cent measure or half-percent, half-percent or half-cent measure without a sunset that was, or I'm sorry, just with or without a sunset, half-percent, 58% yes, 42% no. Definite yes, 16% with 43% probably or undecided but leaning yes. And then the survey results showed on a 1% continuation measure, which is taking our current measure and, and not having a sunset on it, it was 65% yes with 24% no. And that's 24% definitely yes with a 42% probably undecided but leaning yes. And then a half, half-cent on public safety, a public safety dedicated measure again requires two-thirds vote was also 58% yes with 17% definite, definitely yes, and 41% probably undecided leaning yes. So that's, that shows the highlights of the three questions that were ultimately surveyed. Next slide. So when we break down, there was discussion in the June 14th meeting about a sunset on a half-cent. So that was, you know, that was sampled as well. So it was pretty, it was pretty close. Initial vote on a half-cent rate until ended by voters. So this is a half-cent, no sunset, a total of 59% yes with 22% definitely yes, and then 34% probably yes. Half-cent for nine years, so that's a, a nine-year sunset, also yielded 59% total yes, but only 10% definitely yes and 45% probably yes. So that's, it shows essentially the same level of support for a half-cent measure in effect with or without a sunset. Next. So after all of that, based on the description, the question was asked again, would you vote in, in favor of this, if this measure, and this is the recommended, this is the updated 75-word ballot title. And as our city attorney had indicated, yes, that estimated $8.4 million is, is actually eight million at this time. And that's actually due to revenue losses of this year, that, sales tax revenue losses. Next slide. And with that, these are the, these are the consultants. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here today, but I will do my best to answer any questions regarding the survey.
I wanted to thank the city managers that you take the best thought to explain the consultant presentation. I want to thank the staff for taking the time to do this. At this time, I would like to open it for all council members, question for staff, including Councilmember Menzel and Councilmember Hall.
Okay. I do have questions. So I guess let's go from beginning to the back, right? So I wrote down questions while you guys are talking. So on page six. Okay, so when you guys, let me ask city attorney first. City attorney, is it legal for the council to get these questions? Can we obtain these questions to look at it? They're actual questions?
I think in terms of what was asked.
The survey, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's feasible. In terms of what was asked.
Yeah, yeah. Can we get those questions?
There's, there's definitely a very concise, it's handled in a very professional manner in terms of like how the questions are asked one by one by one. Yeah, I, I'd kind of need to find out whether or not that's advisable or not.
I think that the, the purpose is to, for you to, you know, to get the full understanding of this before you can go for it. Why don't you ask the question that, you know, you think that you need? And then the city attorney will, will wait on that and see whether it's legal or not.
So the question is, can we as the council get those questions that was asked to the voters? Is that yes or no?
The questions are all listed on the slide. It says at the bottom, question, I would like to mention some statements about Westminster. Please tell me if you think each of the following statements is accurate or inaccurate. And then those were the results with each of those items listed as far as.
That's perfect. Thank you, Erin.
Yes.
So I guess I, with page six, the question is, I would like to mention some statement about Westminster. Please tell me if you think each of the following statement is accurate or inaccurate. So where's the question?
Westminster voters recently increased the local sales tax. Is that very accurate, somewhat accurate, somewhat inaccurate, very inaccurate, or I don't know?
Okay, did they mention Measure Y's, Y and the tax increase? Okay, got it. Okay, that's, that's awesome. That's good. Okay, so I guess my other questions are, I guess I can ask chief on page 12. Do we know how many percent that our police live in the city of Westminster, our Westminster PD?
An exact percentage, no. It's something that I, I could research and find out, but we actually do have quite a few officers that live in town and family members of, of officers that live in town.
Okay, would you say those law, I guess we have about, what, 100 Westminster PD about? And would you say maybe 10% live in the city of Westminster? Or would you say 20?
So I, I, it would be just an educated guess, but I would say more like in the range of, of 10%. Maybe a little higher if we include the other half of our professional staff. There would, there might be a few more.
Okay, so maybe 10, 15%? Would that be?
A guess, yes.
An educated guess? Okay, thank you, chief. Okay, so in their survey, I guess on page 20, three question was asked, either vote for the 0.5% a lot, I guess 58% are in favor of it, 1% for the 1% tax measure, 65% of people are in favor of it. Now, what is the difference? Why is the people less in favor this time of the 0.5? Can you address that, Erin?
Well, I would just say that the 1% is a continuation past the 20-year sunset. It doesn't bring in any additional revenue at this point. I, I don't know why they would vote one way or another, Christine, but it's no additional revenue to the city. It's just a continuation, so to remove the sunset.
Right, but do you have any prediction of why people vote like less in favor of the 0.5 than the 1%?
No, I wouldn't have any idea why people vote.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, Christine, you did mention that staff earlier, that staff were directed by council in June to do the research, right? And then bring it back to us so that we can sit on it and look at the data. And I noticed that on the survey, it, it says November is when you guys took the survey. What is the delay and why did it take like six months later to get?
Sure. So, so, so it was June 14th when the council decided that to move forward with retaining a firm. So there's always time to retain the firm. As we also know that during the summertime, you know, there were a few meetings that were canceled, but there were also some, there was also some uncertainties that loomed during, immediately after the June council meeting. And there was just a little bit of heightened tensions in the community. And so it was felt that time that to conduct a community survey at that time may have yielded inaccurate results that were not reflective truly of what the residents, you know, perceived to be, you know, as priorities at the time. And so there needed to be a cool-off period. But during that time, staff did work with the consultant to come up with the questions, which is common in this type of research. I don't know if you remember, you know, statistics from, from college, from your college days, but doing this kind of research takes, takes a while for them to develop the questions, to develop their split samples, to develop, you know, kind of like a choose-your-own-adventure, if you will. And so when the questions are finally finalized and agreed upon, it takes time to generate that list, to make those phone calls. As, as FM3 had stated, they made thousands of phone, phone calls. Not everyone get, is happy with telemarketers. So there's a lot of hanging up that happens, a lot of non-responses. So in the end, 238 respondents were ultimately obtained through this process. And then, of course, once those results are taken in, it has to be put into a digestible format for everyone, including ourselves and staff. We saw the results on Monday of this week. So unfortunately, you know, it takes time for them to build the metrics, take the data, put it in, can, you know, consider the percentages, and then, of course, get it into a presentation format. So that is why it took long. It is a process. It's, it's not a fast process. Unfortunately, with the primary being in March as opposed to June, that has also made the deadline a lot, you know, a, a lot sooner than before. And given the fact that we have had, you know, meetings that were, you know, ultimately canceled, the second meeting in November, for example, and us not having a meeting until next Wednesday, which would be past the deadline, we had no other alternative but to try to present it to you before the R of E deadline. And that's simply to, A, fulfill our requirement to provide the council with data, but give you ultimately the opportunity to discuss this. And if there is a desire of four of you to place anything on the ballot or on, on the ballot, you're given that opportunity.
Okay. So you did mention, so I guess my question, have we ever used this firm before?
Absolutely. So they are a very well-respected firm in the past. So Lou Edwards Group is actually a consulting firm that works with other cities, including local cities in Orange County as well. But they were very critical in, in providing the assistance needed to get the 2016 measure on, as well as the one that was for last year, 2022. And so they are very well-respected, and this is their expertise. So we have used them in the past, and Christian can attest to that as well. FM3 is a, essentially a contractor that's used for the survey component, because as you know, mathematics, data collection, et cetera, is a very specialized niche. FM3 is also very well-regarded, highly regarded. And this is what they do for other agencies as well, school districts, cities, nonprofits, et cetera, and not just these types of surveys, but surveys in general.
Okay, so this time around, you did mention that it was harder to retain them. What is the reason for that since we use them before?
So they are, they're very busy is, is, is the first reason. But, but there, there needed to be a sense of stability, and there were things that happened over the summertime that may have created some instability. And so they just wanted to be sure of certain things before retaining or before, you know, putting services forward and contracting with us. Because they are busy during this time. They're doing this for other entities across the state. And, and so to commit their time, energy, and effort, they wanted to make sure that they were essentially going to be able to do it.
Okay.
And so that was, that was the biggest, that was the first hurdle.
Okay, that's good to know that they're busy. And then also just want to make sure the timing is right. Okay, so now, when you say there was high tension during the summer, what was it, the high tension that the, the consultant were kind of waiting out?
We just happened to be in the news a little bit more over the summer with, with headlines in Westminster being a little bit more, we, we were noticed a little bit more during the summertime. And so there were just a lot of, there was a, a little bit more discord among our meetings, et cetera. And so that always changes, that always changes the climate a little bit. It creates, it creates tension. Things have been a little more calmer these days. And so that always, that always helps because, you know, as people are. And so that always helps because, you know, as people are tense and elevated, sometimes they can be a little bit more impulsive with their answers and why they feel the way they do about things.
Councilmember West, I appreciate all those kind of questions. But at this point here, I appreciate that the staff and consultant have done their best to put the presentation and all the information in front of us. I guess if you want to dig into the information, if you have any question on that, rather we going back, why, 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 why?
I'm asking a question. I have one more question, Mr. Mayor.
If you have any question regarding to that, then by all means, go ahead.
Yes, I want to do diligent, you know, before I make any decision. So I have one last question. So the Project Street, I guess, Erin, so you mentioned that there was, because the budget cut and whatnot, we were losing money. What was eliminated? What services were eliminated?
Back prior to Measure SS when we did cuts, we laid off several, or I don't remember the number, I want to say 40, something, 60 employees. We stopped maintaining parks. We cut mowing, I think it's weekly. We went down to maybe once a month. We stopped watering. We can't, we stopped preparing streets. And there's a problem there because if you don't spend a certain amount on streets, you don't get money. So if we don't meet our minimums, we don't get additional funding from Measure M, from OCTA. So if we don't meet that, then we don't get additional. So then we're out the money that we're putting towards it, plus the additional funding. So we stopped that. We stopped training our employees. We stopped additional services to the community. We had extended wait times in the lobby. We didn't have people to answer phones.
What community services that we stopped? Can you tell me that?
I think we limited hours at the senior center. We stopped the community programs like, I'm not sure, but things like our Santa on the Go that's coming. I know the police department started, stopped some of their interaction, their fun events with the community. We didn't have the staff. When we reduced staff by that, we had to do the bare minimum.
Like Tep Parade was a casualty.
Yes.
Tep Parade, Tep Parade was a casualty.
A lot of the community promotions.
Our police had a very successful bike rodeo program where they went out to schools and introduced public safety and education. That entire program that we'd funded through grants was put on hold.
Now, is it back?
It is coming back, yeah. It's part of the Safe for Us to School effort that you were a part of earlier in the year.
Which is also grant-funded.
Which is also grant-funded. The other part too, Erin talked earlier about 4% that the state takes, and there's a certain percentage that OCTA takes. If we don't maintain a certain level of investment into our infrastructure, they are not going to give us our fair share of those taxes too. So that's a very important thing to keep in mind.
That happens with police also. We have the COPS grant. If we don't, we have a level we have to meet. If we don't meet it on spending, we don't get the additional funding. So that happens with a lot of programs.
Yeah, the biggest casualties out of the layoffs, and this was before my time. But, you know, certainly our veterans of our staff can attest to. A lot of it was off of layoffs. Ultimately, it was staff. And so that's why we talk about this narrative of having, you only have one person doing one thing and only one person in that particular title. That's a casualty of that, and a lot of those positions have never made it back. The biggest cuts were to people, which ultimately then resulted in cuts to services.
Yeah, okay, I'm good on question. Mayor?
Okay, thank you very much. If there is any question from Councilmember Menzo?
No, I don't have any questions as far as the staff report that we've heard. I mean, I have some comments whenever that.
Please, go ahead.
I mean, I don't know if any councilmembers have any questions. I'm good for now.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
First, I want to apologize if you see me texting. I'm still, I'm at work, so it's hard for me. I get in a lot of texts and phone calls from my day job, so I want to apologize for that. You know, I have a lot of things going through my mind right now. It's just, you know, and here in our community, in our city of Westminster, we've had a fundamental problem for revenue problem for decades. I mean, people who are really in tune in our community would know that. We have a lot of structural problems that we just cannot generate the revenue needed to sustain our city. We are a service agency. We provide services, all kinds of services, from public safety to public works, community services, everything that goes planning, everything. And all that takes people to do. That's what this agency is. That's what we provide. And structurally, with only 2% of the current 8.75, you only have 2% to pay for all that. It's just, it's math. It's just, it's math. That math does not work. Regardless of how I feel about taxes, I mean, the math just does not lie. You just can't run from that. So the way I see this here, these questions, these questions are so important for our community. These are questions that our community has the right to answer for themselves. What our community, what our community wants to see our city like, what they want us, for us to have here in our community as far as services. Those are questions for our community. And to me, the way I see it, this is about democracy. This is for the community to answer. There's a lot of lives over the decades of our country, or history of our country, I should say. A lot of lives have been lost to give us the right for freedom and democracy. And democracy means for us to express our will at the ballot box. And the way I feel about this, certain issues, that's for me to decide personally at the ballot box. I'm not about to take that right away from anybody. So that's what my comments were the last time this was before us. And those are my comments now. We have a fundamental problem. I personally feel that, you know, the last time, it didn't really go the way that I thought it should go because I'm not about putting Band-Aids on problems. I want to give us, I want to try to solve issues that we have, the problems that we have. I don't want to really hash that, how it went. It went the way it went, and it's giving us, is buying us time to be able to do something, to be able to stay afloat, to be able to keep the lights on. But I just feel that, and I know that this is not how all the, some council up here feels, but to me, we need to give our residents an opportunity. And we cannot leave our residents vulnerable, vulnerable to other agencies taking the, what's out there as far as that. It's not a question of if another agency will take that percentage that's out there. It's a question of when. Because I can guarantee you that folks, other agencies, are looking to see what we do. So it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. So I would support placing this question before the voters. But my preference would be for No Sunset and decided to end by the voters. Because to me, this is, we cannot leave our residents vulnerable to continue to ask to pay it, but for those funds to go to another agency somewhere else. And if that, and that would happen, and our residents would be paying and losing services. So imagine that, that our residents are paying, and we're losing our police. We're losing our community services. We're losing our public works services. So I would, my preference is to support that version. So, but whatever the council decides, I'm here to work with my colleagues and be reasonable. I feel that I want to be reasonable, but those are my thoughts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Menzo. Next, Councilmember who?
I don't know where to begin, really. You know, I've been talking about the Measure SS and Measure Y, and now the half-cent, No Sunset. You know, I've been, I've been discussing it ever since, well, 2015, as I mentioned at the last meeting. And so I myself, I thoroughly understand the reason why and why the cuts. And of course, all those things happened before my time and before all of us on the council, including our city manager, Christine Corden. And I think that, you know, all the questions, all of the questions that Councilmember Amy Van West asked earlier, I thank you. And I think it really shows that you're digging deep into the issue. And I think it really does require us to understand. And that's why it's important to have, you know, I mean, it's okay to have, it's good to have side sessions so that we can, you know, because we're all, we all came on the council at different time. So I want to add just a different perspective. And I don't think that, I don't want to repeat what Councilman Menzo has said earlier. And I'm always downstream from him, so I'm always appreciative of the fact that he's said a lot of what I want to say earlier. But I want to reiterate, though, you know, we talk, we talk so much about democracy. Democracy is the reason why many of us risk our lives to seek democracy here in America. And so I don't want to go into that too much. But I just want to say that I want to put everything in perspective. And the one thing I want us to look at and just to remember that we're not here to decide whether we're going to have the, we're going to make the residents pay an additional half-a-cent tax. What we want to do and what we're doing here is to give them a chance to make the decision for themselves by putting it on the ballot. And that is democracy. And I think that, I'm sure you all agree, because I know we've said it in our prayers and, you know, at these events like Independence Day, America's Independence Day, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm sure you agree with me, to give the people a choice by putting it on the ballot, we're just merely saying, hey, you know, vote, vote for yourselves what you want. And I believe the voters are 18 and over. The last time I checked the ROV registrar voters. And I checked with them, and I know that it's still 18 and over, not under, not under 18. And so they get to decide. And I think at 18, we get to do a lot. I remember my boys, I could tell when they turned 18. I think they were counting the days. All of a sudden, it's like they weren't asking me for permission to leave the house. They weren't telling me when they're coming back, things like that. So that's just kind of the privilege. And also, you know, of course, with that, they took on more responsibilities. You know, they go out and they earn a living for themselves, you know. And we all been there, done that at 18. And as a matter of fact, probably earlier. I don't think they're going to change that voting ages for me, but I think 16, you know, I started. I got my first job offer at 15, like the day before my birthday, or maybe on my birthday. And so here, we're talking about the age of 18. They get, they have to do all this, take on the responsibilities. I do believe that the voters have voted for so many different things. And they have to decide for themselves who they want for president, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Those are very difficult decisions. So I do believe they can decide whether they want the half-cent or not. So that's all, that's, I want to put things in perspective by saying that we're not, when you and I vote yes today, we're not saying that we're imposing this tax. We're voting yes simply to say, hey, this is democracy. You get to vote. You get to decide for yourself what you want. So if I may just put, just give an example before I end my little speech here. But, you know, I was thinking that, I look around the room, and I feel really bad because our police officers, and they're, you know, they represent the ones that are 18 or over. Would you say, I mean, well over 18? And you're here, you're asking us to give you the choice to vote, give you a choice to make this decision, yes or no, you know? And I'm thinking, would you let them make a choice? It's like them asking if they could have a cupcake, you know? Why would they need to ask us? You know, I think that choice should be yours, the voter's choice. I think we shouldn't take that away. So if we take that away, you know, that means you are, you don't believe in democracy. And so it's, you know, whatever you say in your prayers, and you're thankful for democracy and all that, you're really not. You want the choice for yourself. You want yourself to have a choice. But you don't want others to have the freedom to decide for themselves. So that's, you know, like I said, I don't want to repeat everything, all the good things that were said before, earlier. I just want to add that little, you know, perspective. And I think that because I've, you know, been on the council for seven years now, this is the end of my seven years, going on to my eighth year. So I understand thoroughly how we got here, why we got here. I ran for council also because of this very reason, of this situation that our city was in back in 2016. And so I've looked at everything from every perspective. And I know that we are doing everything we can, not just sitting here saying that we're going to talk about taxes and that's all we're going to talk about in terms of revenue. We are making progress. We, I insist in continuing, making the progress to bring in revenue. We've got the mall. We've got a lot going. But all those things, as I, I'm sure you saw, written in beautiful colors in the slides, it takes multi-years. It's a multi-year efforts. And so it will take time. In the meantime, I want you to, I want us to do the right thing. And all it is, is simply let the people decide. That's it. Let the people decide. Don't decide, don't think that you're raising taxes. We have, we don't have the ability to do that. We really don't. It just takes four, to four votes to put it, to put the measure on the ballot for the people to decide.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe that you said that already. So I believe that I give each one of us a fair share of comments, enough time to ask questions and things like that. So I ask for the same amount. and things like that, so I ask for the same amount. So, I would like to reemphasize that making the decision to have it on the ballot is not that we are deciding for the voters that we increase the tax. We will let the voters, we will give the voters a chance so that they can decide whether they want to impose, they want to increase the tax or not. It's not our decision. So I encourage that, you know, think about it so that we can give, give them a chance to decide. Given the situation that we are in right now, as I asked this question before, and I will ask it again, that in June, we have the present, when we try to adopt the budget, we know that, and then you can confirm about it, that we, we know that this year, even we have the Measure Y passed, we still have the, like, 6.5 million deficit for this year, and for the following year, it's going to be 9 million deficit in the following year. And by the chart that we were looking at earlier from, for the '27, '28, we will deplete of the reservation, the budget. It's scary if we look at that, and if you, you know, if we based on, that what we based on the 1% tax already, but we're still eating into the reserve. So here we are, we have to do something about it. I understand that staff and city council have a number of projects put in place so that we can, hopefully, that we can bring in more revenue, but nothing going to be, you know, immediately for us, not until, you know, '27, '28 may, we may have some revenue come in. But that's a projection, we don't know for sure at this point. I think with, given the situation that we're in, I think that we need to have, we need to have more financial help so that we can run the city effectively and, and try to not cutting services as well as the staff. Can you go through the slide number 10?
Of my presentation or this?
Yes, of your, no, of the, for the-
Statistics?
For their tax for all the cities, I believe that from the other, from the other presentation.
Oh. Why is it not going? I apologize.
Well, I can talk while they're looking for it. For all the cities, I believe that, right here, you can see that it's, all of them are 8.75, and a couple of the cities, Los Alamos is 9.25, particularly for the Santa Ana is 9.25. But they do have the sunset, 10 years sunset, so 2039. Obviously, none of us want to raise tax. It's just the situation that we in, we have to do it. So we, as the council, we need to let the resident know that, you know, we don't want to raise tax, but the situation we in, we need your help. So my, my proposal is to, I understand that the 0.5%, if we don't have the sunset on it, there are some other agencies may come in and steal it. I understand that fully. However, we have that for many years already. We have never concerned about it, why we are concerning it about it right now. At the times, at the same time, if we push everything, push out the throat to the resident, we may not have them approve. So we need to be cognizant about what we are asking the voters. We have to let them know that we asking for their, their help in the meantime. However, we are working toward to number of projects to bring in revenue, so hopefully by that time, we can, by the end of nine years, we may be able to, you know, survive ourselves, and if not, then we can always ask them for more. I understand when you mentioned about, you know, some other, some other agency may come in and get the 0.5%, but I don't feel, I don't feel stable or feel confident that we can convince the resident. I myself, if I go out and talk to the, you know, I will advocate for them to raise the half a cent tax. I can go out and talk much more about it, but I don't know, if I don't present them with an option, what we can do as a council, then there was a, why, why, why? Everything you, every time that you need money, you ask for a tax to increase. So with that, I believe that I will propose to, I'll make the decision, I mean, the motion to put this on ballot. And for the half percent, it's going to be for the nine years, just like the city of Santa Ana. And then we can, nine years sunset, and then we will come back and talk about it in the future.
Mayor, can I have a follow-up question?
Yes, please.
Aaron, can you, on the, on the survey presentation, on page 21, what's FM3 presentation?
Can you switch to the slide? Thank you.
Yeah, on this page, I just want to point out, the question, the two questions that are here in front of us is the initial vote, half cent until vote, until ended by voters, definitely yes, is 22%, and the nine years is 10%. And here, this is the something, a good slide to see how the voters feel, because this kind is telling that voters understand the situation that's facing our community. Like I said earlier, I'm willing to work with my colleagues, but I just, to me, it's, I mean, to keep going back and ask and presenting these questions to the voters, you know, over and over again, to me, that's something that's very disheartening as a, for residents to keep hearing these questions. Like I said, when this was before my time, before, I think, all of us here on councils, I don't, time with the Measure SS, that had a sunset, and that basically just kicked the can down the road, and the inevitable was going to happen just six years later. Then, then before us was the last time for the one, and the inevitable is going to happen again, because there's no way that we can generate 16-plus million without that one. There's just no way. And, and right now, as it is right now, that one, it's still not generating enough for us to maintain our services, because we have to pull from the reserve. And last time I checked, for folks to live their daily lives, just paying for things on their credit card, over, it's just not a good math. It's not a good way to do, run your household, and for us to continuously be pulling money from our reserve to run the city is not a good way to do, run business, to run this city. We should be putting money in our reserves every year. We should pay, have enough money to pay for other services, and we should have enough money to put into the reserve every year. That is not happening. The, and I appreciate that this is, that we're, so far, the comments I've heard from the, at least my two other colleagues, that they're in favor of democracy. I just feel that we cannot kick the can down the road again for another nine years. The projects that we have in our community that are happening, that our billboards, the mall, if you add up all those items, all those, all those, none of them even come close to the 8 million that the half cent would generate. That math is not there. Other issues the staff has brought before us, other, other issues is for generating revenue, and the staff can, can, can continue to bring issues, items to us that are possible as generating revenue, but we, as a council, are the ones that need to pull the trigger and make the tough decision if we want those items in our community. And so far, we have passed council, and this council, we've shied away from those opportunities. This half, I'm for it, but it happened before the community, but again, to me, it's about fixing a problem, and we just cannot, the facts are the facts, the math is the math, is that we just cannot generate that kind of revenue from the potential projects that are coming before us. It's just not going to happen, no matter how much you look at it, no matter how hard you pray, it's just not going to happen. So, so I'm, I'm, I would just ask that we really consider that, those facts, and, and place, and, and you can see, if you go back to that slide, the, the community is understanding that, and they favored it 22% opposed to, what was it, 10%? So this community understands this question, so that's the point.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks for bringing the slide back, because otherwise, I wouldn't ask for that. In response to your definitely yes for 22%, as 10%, for nine years, you know, the people who are agreed to this, then they will. But we have to look at for the people who are undecided. Those are the people that we need to have them to decide it, that they are, they are agree with us to increase the tax. I'd rather have something for now instead of getting nothing. That's why I'm, you know, if, and when, when I decide for something, I will go all the way, you know, to advocate and to do, to make sure that we get what we, what we decide to do. Although, although I don't, I can't, I don't know how can I go out and tell the people, convince the people that, hey, just, you know, increase tax without having any alternative ways of convincing people that we, the council, concerned about the city, we, the council, make sure that we do the work for, you know, to, to take care of the city. I'm pretty sure that the San, Santa Ana, the city of Santa Ana, they did the same. And if you look at the city of Santa Ana right now, even though the 10 years sunset was not there, they are doing very well because of the, the tax increase that they had. I'm pretty sure that, you know, if we have that chance, and we convince that to the people in the city of Westminster, I am pretty sure that they will buy it, the idea. We are trying to do a lot of things at the same time. We're trying to continue for the 20, the 1% tax, the Y measure, and we also want to to raise the half percent without any sunset. I don't know whether we can, you know, we can achieve anything. I, you know, that's my concern. I'd rather have something than nothing. That's, that's, that's my point.
Mayor, on that slide, I failed to mention, sorry, I didn't, I missed this part. If you look at that slide again, on the undecided, as you mentioned, it was only 4% compared to, you know, the, the undecideds, 5% on the nine. I totally understand where you're, where you're going with this, but I just, like I said, that's just my, my, my train, my thinking is, give the residents an opportunity to, for us to be able to sustain ourselves for, for many years, and not just, just put a band-aid on it for a certain amount of time. But like I said, and a couple, a couple of points about Santa Ana is, one of the reasons why they're probably doing as good as they're doing is that, I believe I read that they generate 13 million just on cannabis tax alone. I could be wrong on that number, but I think that was the last number that I heard, and that is a big number. That's a big number, and we had that presentation before us, and still, to this day, nothing.
Can you, can you go back to that?
But I'm, I'm willing to work with, with the council.
Can you go back on that slide again? I forgot to mention, too, if you look at the probably yes, probably yes, it's already increased from 34% to 45%. Don't, don't forget that. So, you know, I, I'm pretty sure that if they see that we are, we present them with the situation that we in, at the same time, we are showing them that we are willing to do what we can to offset the, the condition, then they will most likely working with us to get there.
Right.
So that's my motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
May I make a brief statement?
Sure, yes.
Okay. I, I noticed, it was brought to my attention that the president of the police union mentioned that I and vice mayor, I guess, want to defund the police, but I just want to make it clear today that I never want to defund the police. And as you know, since day one, I mean, I have helped the police, and, you know, our law enforcement has been dear to my heart as well as the fire department. So never, and that's a false statement, so I want to clear the record, and I have voted for the budget, as you present, Aaron, you know, the financial director presented to us in June, and I voted, and I believe that the whole council voted 5 to 0 for the budget for our law enforcement. So that statement is false, and I want to make clear of that today. So, thank you.
Thank you. And one more thing that I want to mention, that I don't know why we came up with the nine years at the time, but why not 10 years? So my motion, I want to modify my motion for the, you know, for the 10 years in ten, 10 years sunset. Do you have a question?
Could I speak?
Yeah, please.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Yeah, I've, I've been listening to both comments coming from Councilmember Manzo and Mayor, and I was just thinking that, you know, we, we are putting, putting out over, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars to do this, to put this measure on the ballot. And, you know, to just remember, to protect this kind of investment, and also time that we haven't calculated into that amount. I was thinking that, as we already know, that residents can always cancel. But of course, I think what makes it easier for them to cancel is, say, if I could, like, make a substitute motion, just to see if we could please protect the money and the time that already spent, they'll place the half a cent on the ballot without a sunset, but we need to stipulate that staff must do a survey at the eighth year mark, or ninth year mark now, if you want it to be 10. So, and if that survey comes out differently, then we could- So, and if that survey comes out differently, then we could definitely take action to put it on the ballot to stop. So I think that because rather than stop and start and stop and start, and remember when we do that, we're risking that other entities might take away the half cent and they're right behind us, they could be doing it tomorrow and they'll be in line to take that. So, so again, I'm, I'm just doing what makes sense. I know that the, you know, looking at the survey, it looks very positive, no reason for me to think that they wouldn't vote for it and that's the reason why we had the survey, so we're not guessing. So I think that the nine or 10 years may not be necessary, but we know that we need to do something to help the residents or the constituents along so that they, you know, you know, nine years from now, from the time it passes, we will take another survey. Again, I'm repeating that, is take another survey to see if they have changed their mind. And if so, then we can, the council at that time could take action. So that would be my substitute motion.
Okay, the points.
So we, what we need to do here though, is there a second to the original motion and then deal with the substitute?
Thank you.
Can I go ahead and say before?
Sure.
So that they can hear me before they second it? The point is that how are we going to convince the, the, the voters? If we don't show them that we are willing to do anything to correct the situation for the 1%, for 4.5% from, from, you know, the possibility of other agency may come in and get them. We know that, you know, we never have that concern before. At the time that we trying to do the measure Y, we never talk about it. We never bring it up and we, and why it certainly is, is a, a, a must for us to consider.
Mayor, may I interject and just reply to that?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I, you know, okay, so back when we, this is probably before, I was on the council, but I'm not sure about the rest of you, with Chet Simmons, if you remember, he was the assistant city manager. Well, he's now the manager over at Los Alamos, city of Los Alamos. So he's always, he always said 1 and 1/2% and he's always stated that very reason. And I know that eventually 1% was put on the ballot. But look at, he, now he went over to Los Alamos. The reason, if we can pop that up on the screen, the percentage that Los Al is now 9.25, so that's because their measure was from right away, 1 and 1/2%. And that's from Chet Simmons and he was the person in charge of the sales tax and the advocating for the increase. So I know you probably didn't hear about that, but I, I worked very closely with Chet and I can attest to the fact that that was what went on. So I know you men, you mentioned that you never heard of the 1 and 1/2 because it just didn't go through, it didn't make on the ballot, the 1% did.
I, I think.
Thank you.
And another point to that, to that is that the last time when, and I think we spoke about this on Wednesday, that when the previous council, we didn't have that information in front of us, because I think staff was doing, still doing research, we, we weren't really aware that another agency can come and take and, and put on a ballot right after us to take that percentage once our sunset. We didn't have that information for us to discuss at, when the previous council were discussing the measure Y. So that, that's the reason that, that we didn't discuss it back then, because I think we weren't really aware of that situ, of that possibility, that scenario back then. Am I, do you remember that, is it that way, Aaron?
Yes, and that was presented when we did the presentation in June and it actually has happened in another agency.
Yes, but we weren't, what I'm talking, we didn't have this information.
Correct.
When we were talking about placing the measure.
Right, where somebody could take it, yes, we didn't have that prior to June.
But we had it in June because we've discovered that it happened in Long Beach, was that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So that happened, we didn't, that was the reason we didn't discuss it back then, but we discussed it in June. And that's just a little background on that. And then another point that I wanted to make that I don't think we spoke about this on Wednesday either and, and maybe for all of us is that a lot of those cities that are on that list, I'm not sure exactly how many of those cities, but a lot of those cities, they're, they pay for their fire through the property tax, not the general fund. And I think we've, we haven't spoken about that and this on Wednesday and today. So imagine, so a lot, a lot of that, that those, those folks who are paying in other cities, they don't have that general fund expenditure like we do. We have to pay through our fire service, through our general fund and that's a big chunk, that's a big difference compared to other cities that don't do that through the general fund. So, just that point.
I think if I may, I think that we are very much in agreement that we are going to put the ballot, the tax increase in the ballot. So I'm happy about it. The only difference right now is that we need to make sure that which way is the better way to go. And I think is we better spend some time to talk about it. So I, I've been talking to staff. Let's say that we are going with the 10-years sunset and a couple of years down the line, county of OCTA or whichever agency, they came in and they said, okay, I'm going to take that half a percent remaining from the city of Westminster, not only from the city of Westminster, but also from all the cities that still have the half percent left. If that happened, we, particularly from the city of Westminster, can challenge that? Can we also put the ballot in and then, you know, make sure that, and I'm sure that the, the resident of the city of Westminster, they don't want to lose that half percent to any other agency. Not only that, they have to do throughout all the cities for this Orange County here. So I'm pretty sure that other cities, they don't want to lose that, that percentage. And I believe that I would, the answer that I got is if we, we can do that. And if we have, if both saying no, then they can't take it.
No, no.
They can't take half percent from the city of Westminster. Can I get that confirmation from staff?
So if two agencies go on the same ballot and they're both approved, I called the CDTFA and I spoke to them directly and they're the agency that implements, they said they will not, not collect either.
Okay.
But if one gets approved prior, so say ours ends in 10 years and the county comes in in two years and gets a, a 1% that goes forever, then we, we've lost it. We can't challenge it because it's approved prior to us. We can't go back and get it because they already have it and ours is gone. So we have to do it ahead of them. They can come in after and do that. I mean, I, I guess at the same time we go with them and see if it extends, but I, I don't know that. But I do know that the CDTFA said they will not impose it if both get approved in the same election. So nobody gets the money. So ours wouldn't continue. And then the, the counties, if it were at the same time, I, I just picked the county for an example, I don't know which agency, but if it went at the same time, neither agency would get it. If it goes after ours, but we have a sunset, they would get it if it was approved and we wouldn't have any action against it. It would just automatically go. We couldn't come in and say, well, we know theirs is going to come, so we want to change ours. We couldn't do that.
Christian?
Yeah, that's what happened in Long Beach. They adopted a tax with a sunset and then the county subsequently, a couple of years later, adopted a countywide tax, so it was applicable to all cities. And then that, so it didn't apply in Long Beach at that point because they were already maxed out to whatever was allowed at the point. And then the sunset came due and they decided, let's put this back out. And, and they said, no, it's, it's already taken by the county. You're going to have to wait till the county tax, and in that case, I think it's like a 20-year tax. So they're going to have to wait till the 20 years is up before they can get it. That was the very issue that occurred in Long Beach. I think one thing that's, this might be helpful, again, not, it's for the council to decide how to answer this question, but ultimately, this is the same question that cities have faced since the 70s when Prop 13 came in. You have to decide how much money do we need to support basic services? And then the second question is, how are you going to pay for that in an ongoing way? Back then, before Prop 13, cities could enact taxes, my understanding, they did it without a vote of the people. And, and that created a problem because the school district had one tax, the city had another tax, midway sanitary had another tax, and they felt that it was a huge burden on the people because there was no accountability to it. So they did two things. They, they said, no more 2% from you and 1% from you, it's just going to be 1%, no more than that on the property tax. So they limited how much tax, which immediately cut how much all those entities were getting. And then the second thing is they require that if you're going to do a tax, you got to get a vote from the people. So they didn't, they weren't saying, what they were saying is that if you're going, to fill that underlying question, how am I going to meet basic services? It's always been taxes. It's always been a question, the question is, how much do you really need and what's the stable source? What happened in 1980s, 90s and such is that we, cities tried to fill that gap with sales taxes, redevelopment, you know, trying to do different things to generate revenue. And it has, it's worked in some cities because they've had malls, some cities because they are, live along the coast and their property values are higher. Every city is a little different. The issue with Westminster is fundamental in that out of all the cities, we get the smallest portion of the property tax. So this is baked in. This is not something that this city is going to be able to solve by way of property taxes. Even if we build a bunch of homes, we're still only getting 7%. So some cities have chosen cannabis, some cities have, like I said, have malls, some, everybody's got a, a deal with the underlying question, which is how do I supply in an ongoing way what this city needs in order to pay for the basic services, police, fire, community services, roads? And, and that question is never going to go away. You have to, you, you have to figure out how much money that is and how you're going to fill the gap. Some cities have been able to put TOT taxes because they're right next to Disneyland and they're solving it in that way. So basically determine the amount, determine how you're going to fill it, okay? And then what Prop 13 said, what Prop 218 after that said is give it to the people to decide, do, do you want to meet that basic need with this particular tax? And then they decide. And then they're, they're essentially saying, yes, pay for it that way. That is what Prop 13, which was done by the taxpayer associations, they're trying to create that level of accountability. The real underlying question, I think for people that don't like taxes, which is me in particular, is not to keep piling on. The nice thing about this, these types of taxes is, is that 100% of this goes to the city. So it is answering that question of trying to meet the basic underlying needs of this city in a way that is supportable, is a way that's accountable. So that's why it's framed as a local control type measure. It provides a stable, ongoing source. And, you know, I, I would just leave it. So that's the question. How much does this city need and how are you going to pay for it? It might be with TOT taxes for hotels, it might be for cannabis. It doesn't have to be this tax, but you have to figure out one way to, to pay those basic things in a stable, ongoing way. And that's what Prop 13 intended, that's what Prop 218 intended, is to give it, let the people decide how much they want to tax themselves to meet those needs.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to make sure, did we answer your question? Because I know we kind of went in a, I wasn't sure that your question was answered. So I, I, if you wouldn't mind asking again, I just want to make sure that we answered your question.
I would think that at the time that I talked to some of the staff members, I understand that, you know, if we're, if we go out at the same time and both approve, then none, just like what you said, none of us, none of the agency get, get the, the cell tax. But at the same time, we can always go back and do that again to get, to get additional.
Let me, yes, that is, that is correct. So you can, at the same time, if you know that there's going to be a tax measure on the ballot, you can put on a competing measure. That is correct. That is true. At the same time, if you catch wind that there is something, you could always put, you could at any time put a measure on. What ultimately hinders your, are, the, the council's ability to do so is if one ultimately does get approved and that becomes a race of who does it first.
I think, let me finish if you want. The reason I, I, I want to emphasize this, I want to make sure that we get something instead of not, nothing. And the chart, as you can see, is approved, the, the probably, probably yes, that's, you know, you can see it, it jumped a big amount there. And also that I want to make sure that we from the council doing the job. And we have several projects that in place right now, which is for the, you know, the billboards and the Westminster Mall and more projects. I want to ask a couple of questions. We, you know, we can always come to the conclusion, you know, I, I, I want to convince you with my opinions, but, you know, we can always come to conclusion at the time that we vote. My question for council member whole and staff. Why did we approve the measure SS in 2016 with a sunset of six years without worrying about this one? And then we only go for six years instead of longer? That's the one question. Because, you know, if we thought about the one, that half percent going to be taken by other agency, then why didn't we thought about it at the time?
May I answer that one?
Hold on. The second question is for the staff. If we are going to put the half percent continuation with, I mean, not continuation, half percent without sunset, it make us at the second city with the highest tax. The third one is the Santa Ana, but they will, they have the 10-year sunset. Have we ever talked to neighboring city and see whether they have the same concern as us? I wonder why they were not thinking about what we are thinking right now. And that's why I said that, you know, I afraid that it's very difficult for me particularly, I don't know about, you know, but once I decide to support something, I will go all the way to make sure that, you know, I advocate and, and make sure it happen. It's just, I, I, I want to let you know that it's difficult for me to, to convey the message. So a couple of questions, you go ahead.
Okay, first of all, the SS measure, I was not there for, but I was on the financial task force, looking at every single outline item. Our financial task forces, we were appointed by individual council member at the time and. And I remember the council member that appointed me, who appointed me was, might have been, I can't remember, but we, our, we were tasked with looking at every single item, line item to see if we could cut anywhere. And so that's, that was my involvement with the SS measure. And then we were to present the conclusion to the council and the council, I was not on the council at the time. So that was about 2015, 16. And so the council at the time, I know I was watching, I was in the audience, I was also, you know, on the financial, financial task force, so I was very concerned about the looming bankruptcy at the time. So if you remember, Eddie Manfro was our city manager, he had a letter written, a personal letter written to, not a personal, but coming from, a heart-to-heart letter coming from, as a city manager to all the constituents stating that we were, you know, in a financial crisis and there's looming bankruptcy. So I believe that they were, the, the council at the time were just trying to, you know, put, they were wishing to just get out of, you know, bankruptcy or not get into the bankruptcy situation. And so again, I think the same situation with measure Y. So if we didn't pass and, you know, if we were trying to push for one and a half, I think if staff were wanting to push for one and a half, we may not get it all together. So I think now we're talking about your point of view, and I totally share your point of view, Mayor Wen, that if we put out there, we don't have a sunset, then, you know, maybe people won't go for it, they won't vote for it. So again, there's always that fear that people won't vote for it. But I think what's best is, again, is the putting it on without a sunset. So if we just think about that, because we've been doing it always in fear, taking the lower number just because we're in fear of people not voting for it. But I think our survey shows, and the survey was done by an independent company, I don't even know FM3, who they are, I think they're contracted by, by them, yeah. So by our, our consultant. So what I'm trying to say is that if you, if we can just look at the numbers and only look at the numbers and see what our needs are and what makes sense. To me, I make decisions all day long and I think I just look, I mean, certain times I, I understand that we, we have to do what we have to do just to get by and to, you know, make sure we're not in that looming bankruptcy predicament. But now is the time that we look at it and I can say, you know, we don't need to put a, the, what you call it, clause?
Sunset clause.
Sunset clause, thank you. And, and I think people are going to go for it. And like I said, you know, we need to just do another survey. It costs us much less. How much is a survey, would you say? I know you're not the consultant, but estimate.
Survey is about $40,000.
The survey? Whoa. So to hire, hire them, hired Lewis, is it, what's, what's the num, the name of the company?
FM3.
No, the other, the.
Lou Edwards Group.
Lou Edwards. How much did we pay them?
I don't know off the top of my head, over the lifespan of.
No, no, I'm talking about like for this.
Don't have that off the top of my head right now.
But how come you have the $40,000?
Because that was something that I just recently saw for the survey.
May I follow up a question for council member Ho?
Yes.
Can you tell us why you want to have the 0.5% without the sunset?
As I said, I look at, I, I assess the situation. I'm going to reiterate that to preserve the money, the funds that we already laid out, the time spent, and that equals to money and we're not, you know, putting that into the 130 to 160,000 dollars that it costs to put the measure on the ballot. And then also, we, we've, we need to understand that, you know, we are not taking away any privilege from our constituents. They can always cancel and that, and the way for us to do this is to make sure we have the stipulation, I don't know how that would be, that would be something that our city attorney needs to help us with, but needs to, we need to stipulate that staff needs to take the survey at the ninth year. And then whatever the result of the survey, if the survey says people want to cancel that half cent, it's so easy, it costs us nothing to cancel. I'm always looking at the cost and what is, what makes sense and what is the best way to do business without incurring more costs and more headaches and more time, staff time, et cetera. So to me, I'm, I think it's really a win-win-win and all, you know, for kind of the council member Carlos Monzo was saying, no, no sunset, and Mayor Wen saying sunset. So I think that is the best of both worlds.
Well, I think, let me reiterate this point that I made earlier, Mayor, and for council members, that, that what is, what is before us is that for us to give our residents the, the choice, if, if there is no sunset, the voters have a choice to, to remove the sunset. If we put a sunset on and then another agency, they can do it in the right, right away in the very next election, put on a ballot measure to capture that, that, that percentage, once our sun sets and then our residents have no choice, there's no way to fix that. So that's, that is, that is what I'm saying is that we're leaving our residents vulnerable to be able to still pay that, that, that percentage, but at the same time lose services. That is something that we cannot repair, we cannot fix for our residents. If we do no sunset, then our residents have options to remove it when, when, when they want to, place a measure, remove it and it's removed. That gives the residents an option.
Yes.
Sunset gives the residents no options.
Yes, thank you.
Another.
That was a point I thought was very well made.
Mayor, can I, can I?
Yes.
Just because we are really close to a deadline if there is a desire. So I just wanted to make a couple of points just based on everyone's thoughts and perspectives. I know, I know there was a question earlier about why we went with a nine-year versus a 10-year. You know, there was some discussion that time about a lucky number, single digit versus a double digit, and, and that's where nine came about. But, you know, if, if there is a desire to place a, you know, a sunset on it, you know, I, I would recommend because you're using the, a survey as a mechanism to make that determination, that it was, the survey was for nine years and not 10 years. And so I would just recommend that it remain at nine years and not 10 years. Otherwise, you know, it invalidates the result. So that's the first component. The second component on the table as well, in, in the discussion of a sunset, even if you did have a half cent at no sunset, regardless of, you know, regardless of, of whether someone else ends up taking it or not, there is a sunset on the one year that currently exists, which would then, a half cent wouldn't matter because a half cent that continues on forever without resolving the one cent issue and they're not running, you know, concurrently, you're still going to have a deficit problem anyway. So I just wanted to point that out, but most importantly, the survey was for a nine-year.
Yeah, thank, thank you for mentioning that, that you addressed my next question. My understanding, you said that we have to time the.
You know, I, I apologize.
Five, yeah, 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM. I do have to leave and so I, I don't know how long we're going to be.
Well, I will have the final, final suggestion before we can go ahead and vote for it. My understanding from council member Menso concerns is that, you know, if we put the sunset on it, then the other agency may come in and, and get the half percent. That's a serious concern. Your concern is that, I don't see, I don't see that as your concern.
It is my concern, but it was, because it was already well said earlier.
And if that is the concern, then why, why don't we concern of 1% of measure Y?
Oh, I did, yes, I strongly did.
Okay. So basically, what we are approving, your motion is to approve the nine, the 0.5% indefinitely, no sunset, as well as remove the 20-year sunset for 1%.
Yes.
Am I hearing that right?
Yes, that was my suggestion, but.
We can't, we can't do that in, in this motion. Yeah, we, since it's a separate tax, we have to deal with one.
Okay, okay, okay.
As, as good as.
It'll be simpler, yeah. Keep it separate.
Yes, that was, that was something as, and, and council member Ho and, or Mayor Wen, you, you're the only two that were here for the last, when this came before us, I strongly suggested that we do the no sunset. But as, like I mentioned earlier, we didn't have that information presented to us with that possibility of another agency taking that. And I don't know if that could have changed the, the, the mindset of that council back then, but, you know, that, that's maybe, if that we would have had that information, we would have had a different discussion back then, I don't know. But that was the reasoning and, but I did, that was a concern of mine, but, but yes.
So it's clear that we only deal with the half percent for now. And my motion, I, I still keep my motion as for nine-year sunset, putting the half percent on the ballot for the March 5 election, but keep the nine-year sunset. And if we have the second, then, then we go for it. If not, then we can go with a substantive motion.
Well, there's, I, I want to, I want to, just for us, point, point of discussion and see how this goes. Right now, I want to second council member Ho's motion.
Not yet, not yet. We have to go with the first first. If the first failed, then, then, then will be a substantive motion. So my motion is that, do I have a second? If not, it's going to fail. I don't have the second, so go ahead and make a substantive motion.
Shall we read it back?
You said half cent without sunset and surveying at an eight-year mark.
And, and this is actually a primary motion now, not, because the, there was no first motion.
Okay, yes, that's it.
Second.
You second it, okay.
So we have a motion and a second for substantive motion. Can you go ahead and repeat their motion and then we can vote for that?
Yes, so this is going to be our primary motion since Mayor Wen's motion failed. This is made by council member Ho, seconded by council member Monzo. This is to approve staff recommendation with no sunset clause and direct staff to do a survey at the eight-year mark.
Yes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call.
And if you could, could you clarify too, that this includes items C and D as well?
Yes, I'm going to read the whole thing out. I just wanted to note it since in the titles, it doesn't outline the sunsets. And so you guys will be approving to receive the results of a community survey and consider the placement of a measure on the March 5, 2024 ballot, asking Westminster voters whether they want to establish a half-cent local sales tax added by the voters. With that direction, you will be adopting resolution 5226, entitled A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, calling for the holding of a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, March 5, 2024, for the submission of a measure to the voters related to a proposed half-cent city transaction and use sales tax, and adopt resolution 5227, entitled A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Westminster, California, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Orange to consolidate a special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, March 5, 2024, with a statewide primary election to be held on the date pursuant to California Election Code, Section 10403, and introduce an ordinance for the first reading, entitled An Orinance of the City of Westminster, California, adding Chapter 3, this will be 310, Transaction and Use Tax of 2024, to Title 3, Revenue and Finance of the Westminster Municipal Code, read by title only and wait further reading of.
And I would just need to clarify for the council that that would require unanimous vote of the four council members present in order to accomplish that.
Before we vote, could I say something? Thank you. I just want to reiterate that we are only, we're not increasing their tax, we're not, by, if we vote yes, we're only giving them the right to decide for themselves if they want to increase the, by one, half a percent sales tax or not. So we are not voting, so when we vote yes, it is not to increase.
We understand that, and we, we repeated that many times already. It's just that we want to make sure that we, we have, we are responsible when we put it up. So, you know, whether or not we, not only that we put it up for the voters to decide, but we, once we decide to do it, we need to support that. So why don't we go ahead and call, a roll call for the substantive motion?
Thank you. This is for the primary motion as read into the record. I'll go ahead and start with councilwoman Van West.
Can you come back to me?
Sure. Councilmember Monzo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilwoman Van West?
Can I be the last one?
No, well, it's up to the mayor.
Mayor, would you like to go first before councilwoman Van West?
Yes, I, I vote for no.
Your vote is a no? And councilwoman Van West?
My vote is, before I vote, I believe that the people should have a voice and it's crucial. Tax is a huge issue, as you know, this is, I just feel like we don't have a lot of time. It was spun on us. I have two, three days to look at the data and the research. And I just feel like, you know, this is given to us so later in the year. You know, I do feel like it's too rushed. You know, I, I do understand with the gas price on the rise, you know, the inflation, the housing, it skyrocketed. And, you know, I, I just feel like it's too early for another tax increase, but I do truly trust the people to have the voice and I want the people to speak for themselves. So I vote yes.
Okay, so I do have a 3-1 vote. Unfortunately, this does not pass forward because it needs a fourth, fifth vote.
Yeah, it, it would not pass without four votes unless there's a change in the vote.
Well, and that, and that's in this, for the, for the community and for, for the sake of our staff, I'm, I'm going to speak a little bit, maybe this is out of line on what I'm going to say, I don't know, hopefully you guys don't get mad at me, but, you know, whatever happens to this community, whatever happens in our city, you know, you know, it's financial, financially, you know, I have a job, you know, myself and my family will be okay, but the, the folks in our res, our residents will not, if our, our city fails, every single man and woman, person who works for the city will not be okay. And I, and I took an oath to protect our city and that's what I, that's what I'm do, that's what I have been doing for the, you know, for pretty much the whole time I lived in Westminster since the 80s, when I was on commission and now I'm council. I care about our community. I, I, I want to make sure that every single person is taken care of in our community. For that, for that reason, I'm going to make a, the city attorney, I can make a, a, a motion.
Yes, you can make.
Before, before you make a motion.
The mayor have to.
The mayor cannot make the same motion twice, is that correct?
No, he could change his vote, the item isn't finished.
He can make the same motion? He can make the same motion? Okay. If you make the same motion...
I know it's a very, very difficult decision to make. It's not something that I want to do. I know if I resist, then probably councilmember Menzel will, you know, make a motion, you know, to reconsider. But for the sake of the city, I will change my vote to yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
So with that, we go ahead and mention the result again, please.
Yes, so for the record, I do have a revision to the vote. I will go ahead and call it out. If you guys can please restate your vote for the record. I will start with councilwoman Van West.
Can you go to the end for me again?
Okay.
I don't know that that's necessary.
I can just read it into. It's going to be...
I think it's already done, so we don't need to go back.
So I have Mayor Wen as a yes. I have councilwoman Van West as a yes. I have councilmember Monzo as a yes. I have councilmember Ho as a yes. We have four yeses, and this is majority, so this does pass.
Thank you very much, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, you want to go ahead and announce the adoption of the resolution? Do you? Have you?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's been done. She read it out.
All right, so, thank you very much. Thank you all for attending the meeting today. Thank you for the result that, and then now the staff have to do their work. At this time, I would like to adjourn the meeting. And the next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, December 13, 2023, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, councilmember.